Leading to order, we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance by trustee McGee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks trustee McGee. Oh, let's hand this show over to Mr. Hilton who's got lots of good news.
All right, thank you President Lewis, trustees, give me just a second here, I'm gonna jump in. Okay, up on the screen here this evening, you can see the good news presentation. And trustees, you may have noticed that we have a special, some special guests with us this evening. And in a few minutes, I'm gonna ask them to come up to the podium, but first, I'd like to say a few words. So, first of all, I want you to meet Daisy, she's up here on the screen, she's with us this evening. And as you know Daisy, in some ways, you could say Daisy's our newest staff member at the middle school and she is already helping our students to feel safe, calm, and supported throughout the school day. So, in a minute, I'm gonna bring them up, but I wanna share a little bit about the impact of facility dogs, such as Daisy, and the impact that they have on school environments for not just kids, but adults as well, and then you can officially meet her, okay? So, a couple people have asked me, what is a facility dog? A facility dog is a professionally trained dog to serve specifically in educational environments to support calmness in varying situations. So, for example, a child who maybe becomes upset, or a child who is sad, or a child who has even had a recent traumatic event in their life, things of that nature, Daisy is trained to respond. So, Daisy will eventually be full-time in our school, working alongside of her handlers to support our students' social and emotional needs within the school day, as well as, on occasion, outside of school day events. So Daisy is trained to support the social and emotional needs by helping to, specifically, what will she do? She'll be able to help reduce anxiety, reduce stress, reduce overwhelm, respond to sadness, while helping children build confidence, empathy, and communication skills. Essentially, you can think of her as a calming force in our school environment. So, I wanted to just say a little bit about the impact and some studies. Studies have shown positive impacts for students who've experienced various traumas in life. And they've shown, they've actually even shown positive impacts on reading achievement. Now, honestly, if somebody had just said that to me without my, my personal experience as a reading teacher for a number of years doing this and, and having children who were struggling to read, actually read to the dogs, fluency is developed, pacing is developed, tone. It really is a remarkable thing to see children reading to dogs and the, the impact on reading achievement is there as well as the impact on the environment for kids. So, a day in the life, what will, what will Daisy typically be doing? She'll be doing a lot of things, but a typical day includes morning check-ins with individuals and groups of students, she'll visit classrooms, she'll have individual sessions planned in advance or even in-the-moment sessions to support kids, and again, she'll be spending time listening to kids read. So, to sum it up, I would say it this way. Daisy's journey to Tecumseh Middle School was made possible through the generosity of our community partners. And I wanna give a heartfelt thanks to the following folks, you can see them up here on the screen. Graciously donated by Catherine Wieland of the Wieland Insurance Agency. Daisy's handlers are Deb Falwell and Nicole Farrell, who have been receiving specialized training to work with Daisy. Veterinary care trustees, veterinary care is gonna be provided by Dr. Major at Companion Animal Clinic here in Tecumseh. Supplies, food and treats have been donated by Grace Roberts of Waggs to Whiskers. Ron Ploblisky and Tracy Hendrick from Kiwanis, they donated some dollars for a dog coat, the patches, some incidentals. Ava Salbine at Pooch Parlour for grooming services. Mary Tomlin has been a, a community supporter in this and helped us organizing. And Vicky Riddle actually sewed the vest that Daisy has on this evening. So, I'm gonna stop here, I'm gonna give a great big thank you once again, and I'm gonna bring up Deb and Daisy, and Nicole is coming, and they're gonna share a few words, just a little bit about Daisy and how things are going thus far, and I would also love to bring our, our community partners up to the podium as well, so please don't be shy, please come on up. Come on up. Come on up.
Daisy is doing phenomenal, there have been bad moments, but not bad days at the middle school, because when it gets overwhelming or stressful, you just see Daisy and you see the kids' excitement and even the staff members' excitement when they see her. And even walking down the hall, I've learned it takes me three times longer to get to my destination, because everybody just wants to see her and love on her. She's helped kids come into the building, she's helped crying kids snuggle and like calm them down. She's helped kids, when they get worked up, they're like, "I just want Daisy." Well, you can't be loud, you have to calm your body, calm your hands, and they respond to that because they just wanna see Daisy, and we've done classroom lessons with her and the kids interact with her. We're currently working on pushing a button and rolling dice so she can help with math skills. And I, it's just amazing to see the difference in kids, like, someone's like, "I think the kids need to know her name," and I'm like, "I think everybody knows her name." Day one at the pep assemblies, we introduce her and all the kids yell Daisy right away. They just get so excited to see her, and she's ready to go to work in the morning, she eats breakfast, and she goes and sits by her vest, like she's ready, she's like, "Let's go." So she can't wait every day to go to work, and we couldn't do it without our support of our community.
Deb, thank you so much. Thank you for coming tonight, I really appreciate everything you're doing for our schools. One more picture. Do you wanna get a picture?
Yeah.
Yeah. Before you go, trustees, do you have any questions for the group?
No, thank you, it's awesome.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Hilton, I do wanna say-
Sure.
The kids definitely know Daisy, when I told my daughter, "Well, the dog's gonna be at the meeting tonight," she said, "Oh, is it Daisy or Buddy?" I said, "Oh Daisy, yeah, okay, yeah." They know her, and these are great programs to see, not, not just what it does for the community, the kids, but the community involvement here, you know, there's always great ideas and then you have to figure out, well, how are we gonna pay for it, what are the logistics of making this work? And, you know, seeing so many people from the community step in and make this possible for our students is really great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also forgot to mention, we have a K-9 group that is meant to be, some students will be taking over ideas for fundraising and getting involved at the school.
All right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis.
That brings us to public comment, do we have public comment tonight? Okay, I have to read my blurb. In accordance with the opening meeting act, open meeting act of 1986, the board provides opportunity for citizens' input during the public comment. Because agendas are full, each speaker is limited to three minutes. The board will listen, take comments and questions under advisement, and not respond at this time. Presiding officer will refer questions to the superintendent for research and response. Okay, Mr. Van Ader, head on.
Yes, sir. I know most people here, but my name is Tim Van Ader, I'm a 1985 graduate with my wife Renee. Our two boys have gone through the Tecumseh School District and graduated in 2012 and 2014. What I wanted to talk to you about briefly today, I was going to do off the cuff, and then I figured I'd start rambling and I wanna get the time constraints, so I'm just gonna read from a statement or a document that I put together, and then we'll go from there, okay? All right, so, in 2011, Griff Mills requested that I consider building a baseball practice field at the high school. Kids were walking across town to either Nahha Field or Russell Road to practice, including my son who was a freshman at the time, and he knew that we had had positive experiences out at Mitchell Park, building baseball and softball diamonds for the Little League and, and improving their facilities. Upon that time, ground was broken in 2012, Greg, you were intimately involved at that time with what we were doing at that point, and Tecumseh played their first varsity game in May of 2014 versus Ann Arbor here. Got to see my son play on that field, which was very special, but it did begin playing varsity games in 2014. In 2017, and through what I consider to be an incredible effort by many, including the Tecumseh baseball and softball coaches, parents, the baseball and softball fields with stadium seating, press boxes, scoreboards were completed. In addition, the soccer press box was completed, shelters, which I call dugouts and have been corrected and scolded for on the soccer field, but I'll call them shelters, and a scoreboard was also completed for that playing field. These have since been used for practice, regular season games, and hosting MHSAA district play here in Tecumseh, Michigan. Since that time, there have been a few enhancements to the complex, including batting cages and bullpens built and paid for by the baseball and softball programs. Since the first game in 2014, there has been minimal maintenance provided by the school district beyond adding infield surface in 2021 and a recent laser leveling of the baseball infield. The baseball field outfield fence was last painted in 2019. Going back through our records that Tom and I were working on at that point, it was about $2,300. That was paid for by the Tecumseh baseball program and my family. We split the cost and did that because it was well overdue at that point, and that was already six years ago. Several times, when you talk to people in the area about the athletic facilities especially, the, the common response is, "Well, if we'd just pass a bond around here." That's always the, not always, I don't wanna, it's often what's said in return when you're asking about certain things like that. With that, in 2008, I co-chaired the bond campaign that failed. While talking with people about this campaign, a major concern was that very thing of taking care of new facilities. For that proposal, for that bond campaign, the baseball fields were budgeted between $800,000 and $900,000.
Okay, go ahead and find us-
I've got 30 seconds, I'll be outta your way, I promise. Both bonds failed miserably, and some of the needs still remained. At last Friday's game, people made comments about the fields, including the A.D. from Pinckney, also Eric Hoffman, who hadn't been back for the Hall of Fame portion of this, as far as that goes. At the time, when we did this program through our volunteers and such, we, we put in about $200,000 worth of fundraising, the school put in $35,000 and $45,000 for those complexes. It just brings me to my question, and I have a little bit more here, but I'll just, I would like to understa- and I know I can't get an answer tonight, I understand that, and I understand the form now of how this works, but I would like to understand how and why the school's district cannot support more of general maintenance for these gifts that were given. I could go into the football stadium, I could go into the other things, I, I don't think that coaches have to pay for new gym floors or turf and such as that, but if I talk to Tom, "When's the fence gonna be fixed?" I have to raise the money. I'm just asking that something be considered a little bit more in that regard, and try to understand why it is that it's just assumed that 13 years later, 12 years later, whatever it is, that things will continue to go down the path that they have.
Okay, and will, will Mr. Hilton and I and Mr. Zajak will talk and figure out what, you know, some, it'll be a superintendent's job to get back to you, but somebody will be, there'll be, or he'll direct somebody to get back to you with some of the answers to those questions.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you, I appreciate you listening, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, good seeing you. Okay, revisions and approval of agenda, do we have any revisions tonight from anybody? Okay? Just something to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second, approved the agenda as written, roll call vote. Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Simpson?
Aye.
Trustee Martinez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee McGee?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Schedule reports. Kirkman Committee.
All right.
Mr. Martinez.
Yeah, so-
Oh, you get to go up front, like, no.
We, we met on Wednesday the 3rd, we, myself, Mr. Hilton and Megan. She updated us on three issues, the 35M grant, we got awarded $245,000 for literacy curriculum, that's gotta be spent, it was before September of next year, so there was gonna be some kinda reshifting of the timeline on curriculum review to make sure that we got these changes done in time to use that grant money. The, the History Day program, I thought this was kind of a cool thing. It's essentially an essay writing contest, done by grades, open for 3rd through 12th grade, where individuals or groups up to five can write on a Michigan history topic within the theme, this year, Revolution, Reaction, and Reform. It's, sounds like both statewide and then a national level contest. So, we're looking at getting it worked into the 3rd grade curriculum as part of their social studies, I guess, and have them write on that. And then New Killen for the high school, around $6,000, but that was something that we knew was kind of a coming expense for that program. And that was it.
Are we buying anyone?
What's that?
Are we buying anyone?
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? Or any questions at all for Dr. Martinez? All right. Operations update. Look at that, Johnny out of spot.
Great. Good evening, as we begin week four of the 25-26 school year, I wanted to take a moment just to provide the Board of Education with an update from the Operations Department, with the intention of providing a similar update each quarter. This allows for the entire Board of Education to stay up to date with progress on projects and operation goals, and provides an opportunity for you to ask questions that you may have. Over the past couple months, Mr. Hilton and I have both shared information on a number of projects completed over the summer, as we planned for the return of school, and a real-time document was shared with board members to see all that we were doing. In total, over 150 requests were completed over the summer, with small requests like adding shelves and providing additional furniture, all the way up to larger projects like exterior door replacements and parking lot resurfacing. This was in addition to the deep cleaning, the painting, and preventive maintenance tasks like cleaning coils and changing air filters and all the classroom ventilation units that were performed by our amazing team. And let's not forget about technology, though behind the scenes and maybe not as visible as others over the summer, the IT team collected and inspected all Chromebooks across the district, over 2,000 devices. They also updated our networks and worked with vendors to install additional access points and switches to provide better Wi-Fi access to our students and our staff. Since the return of the staff at the beginning of August, we've received 735 work ticket requests, which is an increase from 442 submitted this same time last year. About 50% of these requests were maintenance requests, the other 50% being technology, with 552 of these tickets being completed over the past four weeks, providing us a 75% completion rate, with less than 15% of the tickets taking more than three days to resolve. Though we were not able to meet our usual goal of greater than 90% completion, the operations team did an excellent job completing tickets and handling the overwhelming volume of requests this fall. In addition to this daily work being completed by the team, we have also worked over the few, past few months to evaluate our capital projects list and begin to prioritize and plan for next summer. This list will continue to be updated as we move forward and navigate the challenges that are presented in an ever-changing economy and political environment. These challenges include projects like the solar installation project that would have included roof replacements at the high school and middle school. This project was structured around leveraging a significant federal grant opportunity, the USDA REAP grant. That program alone represented nearly $2 million in incentive towards the roofing scope for both schools, in addition to the 30% investment tax credit and an additional 10% bonus for domestic content. Unfortunately, the passage of recent legislation has resulted in sweeping federal cuts to clean energy programs and has eliminated the viability of this project at this time, putting costs of roofs back onto our capital list. Moving forward, the Operations Department will continue our efforts throughout the school year to meet the department's goals of providing safe and clean environments for our staff and our students, which includes, but is not limited to, the continued evaluation of our capital needs, plan and implementation of increased safety and security measures, and increased communications to our staff, Board of Education, and our community as a whole. Does anybody have any questions tonight?
Just one, I mean, with all the work tickets you get, was that more from technology? Or was it, or is it more from?
50-50, so yeah, half of those, it was just about, it was like 47 to, you know, 51%, it was very close, so. But yeah, just about 50-50.
That was, my question was in the same direction, what do you think accounts for the, the big change in the volume of tickets?
So I think there's a couple of things, one, I think the work ticket system was new last fall in '24, so I think people are more comfortable with the system now, which increased the number of tickets. I think honestly, we've set the bar higher as well, so they expect more. They expect, you know, better results from our department, so I think that's helped with increasing the number of tickets as well, they know what to ask for now.
Are a lot of those technology requests, are those supporting staff or students for the most part, you know?
It's a mix, it's both, so, yep, there is a mix, a lot of it is though Chromebook repeated and student-related, Caroline can attest to that, she is our specialist that works on those Chromebooks, so she's definitely very busy with that.
Josh, good report, question, I'm sorry to beat this up, but you categorize that and then compare it from last year to this year to see if there's a trend difference, or are we behind on maintenance or something, just to give you an indication?
We do, we actually, it's all by division, so I have like electrical keys and cars, like everything is broke out in those ticket systems, so I could see if we're seeing a spike in one area over another. Right now, that's pretty straight across the board, it's a little bit of everything, I'm not seeing major spikes on that, but we do know like this time of year, we're gonna start getting a lot of the, you know, either we're too hot or we're too cold calls, so you see some swings, but those are seasonal, we get those every year.
I was gonna put one in tonight, it's kinda chilly. Could save some money.
Absolutely.
I think it's great.
Right.
Thanks Josh.
Yep.
What is the current timing of the, the roofs at this point?
The timing of the roofs, that is a great question, and we'll know that more in the next couple months when we see what happens with the pool here, so that's kind of the deciding factor, because that was the first, you know, phase of that sinking fund, so, as I have Aaron Phillips here with McCarthy and Smith, who's gonna report here in a minute with me, that, that's kind of our deciding factor right now on which way we move forward.
Thank you.
Thanks Josh.
Yeah.
Josh, you wanna bring Aaron up and introduce him?
I will, I'll bring him up for the next one. This is Aaron Phillips of McCarthy and Smith, they're a construction management company, so I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thanks Josh, good evening Board of Education, appreciate the opportunity to present to you tonight. So, what I'm presenting tonight is the, the bid summary for the bids taken, public bid opening for the work, for the investigation of the pool steel. So as you recall, the last board meeting, structural engineers will be evaluating further the structural steel of the building itself. In order to do that, scaffolding needs to be built and erected to get up to an elevation where they can be about an arm's length away from the top girders, which is, which is complex in itself. So, there's two entities involved with this, one is the scaffolding itself, which will be placed in the pool, it'll extend out pretty wide enough for a walk plank, and then the second will be selective demolition of, of the lower bulkhead, a vertical component, and an upper bulkhead. So essentially scaffolding will be erected, again, some of that will be in the pool, to a level that the demolition can occur. Once that demolition then occurs, we'll have to build another, another level of scaffolding on top of that to allow the structural inspectors to inspect, conduct their inspection, and then we'll disassemble all the, all the scaffolding, so it is a very complex system. So, having said that, we solicited bids, we had the, conducted the bid opening on September the 3rd at 10 o'clock AM, sealed public bids, we received six total bids, which is, which is a great number for the scope of work that we had, we had a total of four bidders that bid on the selective demolition, and two bidders bid on the scaffolding itself. We'd have liked to have seen more, of course, any, any bid we issue, we like to see a ton of bidders. The scaffolding itself was very complex in nature, it's very specialized, there's really only a couple companies that specialize in that type of scaffolding system around the area. Both of these companies that submitted bids were familiar with, they do, they all do great work, all of the bidders in fact do great work, so, the two apparent little bidders were DKI International Incorporated for the selective demolition, and Seaway Scaffolding and Equipment for the scaffolding itself. Josh and I, along with Whitman, conducted post-bid interviews with both those companies to confirm scope, labor requirements, kind of their total plan, to understand how they viewed the project and to flush out any discrepancies in their bid that they may have. Those went really well, and, and so the total award recommendation that we're recommending for contract award is $66,959. When, when Josh and I were preliminary, preliminarily working up a budget, we estimated somewhere around $85,000 for this work, so we're roughly 20K under budget, which is always a, a great win. And with the approval with the Board of Education, we would issue letters of intent following the next board meeting, and then start work in around the first week of October. So, certainly be able to answer any questions you may have.
Does this, this doesn't include any engineering, just to check, do we know how much that's gonna be?
Yeah, they're estimating 20 to 30,000, and that's what they estimate originally still for that. And then there's of course some soft costs too with our architects and our construction management companies as well. We are definitely, we, we had looked at a total package of about 150,000, so we are well under what the total estimate budget was when we first talked about this.
All right, you said you're gonna be putting the scaffolding in the pool, I'm assuming there is some kind of protection in those areas?
Great question, yeah, there's, we'll have scaffolding under the feet on the pool basin itself, and then the total work areas, we think of these as kind of a surgical approach, a lot of plastic, a lot of temporary floor protection, we wanna protect adjacent surfaces so there's no residual damage, be very clean when it's, when it's done.
Awesome.
Can you expand upon the bidders, so for the scaffolding, I received your note about a couple of things, so union versus non-union, that makes sense, and then the time difference as well as travel, but the time was pretty significant, is that because maybe more people have to be involved because it's union, or what caused that variance?
Perhaps, people, especially when it comes to these specialty-type things, different companies have different approaches, so I think the question pertains to the number of labor hours allotted, right? Different people look at projects in different ways, at the end of the day, it's our, it's our job to flush out to make sure they have a complete scope of work. How they get there is, there's an art to each company, I'm sure, and, but if one company can do it the exact same way as the other with less human resources, it's to their advantage because they're saving money in essence, so it's our job to flush that out and make sure they have a good solid plan, and that it meets the scope of work as we designed, and it did. plan, and that it meets the scope of work as we designed, and it did, so I can't, I can't say from their perspective why there's so many more hours than, than the low company, but the low company certainly put some effort into it and have a really solid plan, so it's, I can't answer that question a hundred percent on their, their thought behind the number of hours that they have in their bid, but I can, I can answer, the low, the low company has a well-thought-out plan, they're wrecking the same exact steel scaffolding system as we designed, or as we, you know, illustrated that they need, and they're gonna do the work in the same amount of time, so how they get there is each company's, I guess, art, if you, if you'd like to say that, so.
Okay, it was just more than double, so that's why I was asking.
It was quite a bit, yep.
And then also, what were the reasons for the variances in the other, in the demolition between the twenty-two thousand and the hundred and almost four thousand?
Yep, so included in your bid package are the, are the actual bid tabulation, so the low bid was twenty-two thousand dollars even, the next bidder was thirty thousand four hundred, the next was forty-two thousand two hundred, and the outlier was a hundred and three thousand six hundred and forty. So typically in, in, in the bidding world, that's a, I don't wanna do it number, why would they would rate waste resources on estimating a project like that? Don't really know, but they, that was their number, and so we, we record that and we read it aloud, and I think the, the sweet spot, of course, was the first three that were relatively really close range.
You see that a lot in construction projects, because one guy will be super busy, and if he wins it at that high number, he's like golden.
Yeah.
He'll take it anyway, but, you know, so, and then you'll have one that's that busy, and, here they are, so.
And, and there is an art to that, if people have a, a less backlog and they really need to keep folks busy, they may put a smaller margin on it, they may get real sharp with that number, and if, yeah, if we're really busy, we'll just throw a number out there and see if it sticks, that's why it's good to have a competitive public bid environment, so you don't just take the first thing that jumps at you.
That's kind of the whole reason to do bids, they get to put their price out there and we get to pick.
Yes.
So just a timing question?
Sure.
Because I think there's potentially a discussion of suspending rules this evening, does the schedule start any earlier if we vote this evening?
No, and I, and I responded late today to that question, sorry, but, most of the schedule put together, including all the bid packets, was based around when the, the engineers, structural engineers are available, and that is that weekend in November that's highlighted in there for testing, so even if passed earlier, and it's really not gonna change the schedule, it's based on their timeline, and as Aaron and I kinda talked about a little bit earlier, it may even go the opposite way if we have scaffolding erected and sitting here longer, then we're starting to pay the longer rent off the end of scaffolding.
My last question is regarding the bid award summary, where there's a low range and a high range for each one, and the low range is the, the bid that is highlighted, can you explain the high range that's there and the probability that that would occur?
Uh, the high range is simply the highest bid received in that bid category.
I see.
Um, and there, there really is no probability, because we're, we're recommending the low bidder that actually had that, that bid amount.
Okay.
So we just illustrate that on a, on a really large project, where we could have potentially, you know, twenty, thirty, forty categories of work, it's nice to see that total range to capture what was total project cost, on this one, it's a little skewed, because there's only two, excuse me, two bid categories, and only two bidders in that one, so you have the low one and the high bidder, so it's just representative of the actual bids received.
Anybody else? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Davis, you up?
Okay, so, in our last board meeting, we discussed kind of getting the board norms set, so if you wanna go to the next slide, this is just a reminder of our current norms that were developed in kind of the twenty-twenty-one timeframe, just for everyone's reference, you have them in your packet, next slide please, this is just a reminder of the previous discussion, so discussion really centered on two specific norms, that we treat each other with dignity and respect, and are genuine with each other about ideas, challenges, and feelings, the request was to add staff and community, and then the second one was all members seek to understand topics prior to voting, then the request was consider wording around data-driven and evidence-based, so we'll go through each one separately. So the first one, we treat each other with dignity and respect, and are genuine with each other about ideas, challenges, and feelings, this is a little longer than I, I probably would, I kinda like bullet points to be even with wording, but I feel like this is our most important norm, so it's okay, what was drafted and changes are absolutely acceptable, that's what the discussion is for, so we, in our role as board members, commit to treating one another, our community and TPS staff and families, I added families, because I thought it was a distinct part of the community, with dignity and respect, we engage with authenticity, sharing our ideas, challenges, and feelings openly and genuinely with each other, so. Any questions or comments on that one? And again, you have time to digest this, we're not voting tonight, so if, if you come up with other wording, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with other wording, but just making sure again that we add in those key, key stakeholders. Okay, go to the next one, so, second discussion norm was all members seek to understand topics prior to voting, so the request was around data-driven and evidence-based, so in education speak, those terminologies are very specific to curriculum and programs, that they need to be data-driven and evidence-based, however, I think the spirit behind the request was a good one and proper, so for discussion, all members seek to understand topics prior to voting, that's kind of the initial one, carefully considering relevant data and evidence to inform their decisions, so we kind of walk off of the data-driven, evidence-based, which is extremely educationally centered towards curriculum and programs, but we still keep the data and evidence in there about our own decisions, so. That explanation was just to help you understand why maybe the terminology is just a, a little different. Okay, and then, I think that was it. So any discussion from members or recommended changes, like I said, we can, I could take those this evening, or if, if you wanna kind of digest them a little bit and bring them back before we vote, or send them to Veronica and Matt, and they can share them, that we can consider if we vote on new norms at the next meeting.
Any other discussion?
Sounds good to me.
All right, thanks for your effort, Glenn. Action items, we have none.
We have none.
That's a good thing.
Well, but I think it, it was mentioned maybe in an email regarding the pool, if we had any desire to suspend rules about this evening.
It sounds like, yeah, if there's no advantage to doing that, we're probably better to, to sort of follow the formal structure of it, yeah.
It was even, even a little more thorough, because he said it could be a disadvantage in favor of scaffolding.
I'll bet with that, just wanted to make sure we confirmed it.
Okay, so there are no action items, consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the regular board meeting of August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved and segmented to approve the consent agenda, consent from August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, roll call vote, Trustee Brooks?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Simpson?
Aye.
Trustee Martinez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee McGee?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Out of the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis, trustees, Ms. Way, we're, we're gonna share a presentation with you this evening around our career corner, Ms. Way and I have actually made mention of, of this career corner at past board meetings, so tonight is really gonna be your first work, or your first look at this work as a, as a whole, and our intention is to give you a broad overview, as well as then to give you a sense of how this work actually plays out in, in supporting students as they answer the following questions, one, who am I, two, where am I going, three, how will I get there, and four, who can help? So what the, what the career, career, the, the, the underlying essence of the career corner, I guess if you will, is, is really about helping students pre-K through twelve identify and plan for their post-secondary success, so we're gonna share a little bit with you about how this work has developed over the, the last year, and I think even, even prior to that, as it's been a part of the district's strategic plan over the last number of years, so, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Way, and she's gonna take it away, and we'll certainly take your, your questions as we go.
Yep, so as Mr. Hilton was saying, we've been doing a lot of work since the inception of the strategic plan in twenty-twenty-two around careers, and so we have all the, all of these things, and now we need a place to put them that are easily accessible for students, staff, and families, so if you can go to the next slide, yep, so on the career corner on the website, there are four different components, we have our TPS career development model, we have our career pathway documents, our portrait of a Tecumseh graduate, and our conduit to the trades resources. So the first one is our career development model, so we have a handy-dandy twenty-seven-page career development model that we put together last year, we had a team of teachers, counselors, directors, administrators, that all worked on this, Ms. Followells here, she was on that committee with us last year, but we all, we spent some time together just looking at the new Michigan career development model, which if you can remember, I've been saying we were waiting on and waiting on and waiting on, well, it finally came out, so, the Michigan career development model is something that MDE wants all schools to be doing around helping kids plan for post-secondary success, so we wanted to look at what the model they had, and then adapt it to meet our needs, and add all of the other resources that we had been using, so in this document, we have lots of things, but to the main things that we have in there, we have the Michigan career zones, clusters, and pathways, there's six career zones, there's seventeen clusters, which is made of seventy-nine different pathways, so we kind of highlight some of those things in there, but the bulk of it really is this Michigan career development model targets, so for each kind of grade band, elementary, middle, and high school, the state has four to eight targets that they want us to hit, so it could be things, like at elementary, it's around career awareness, so all things career awareness, we learn, they learn about the different career zones, starting to make academic connections to careers, and then lots of career exploration activities, so then when you move into middle school, you have more targets, so you build on what you're doing in elementary, but it's more about career exploration, and then you start to figure out what different careers are there out there, what are my interests, and they even start doing their individualized educational development plans, starting in seventh grade, so that's a process where they start to think about, like, what am I good at, what am I interested in, what, what careers do I wanna learn more about, and then when you go into high school, there's even more targets, so there's eight targets in high school, and that's all around the career preparation, so we've, we've become aware, we've explored, and now we're planning in high school, so you expand on what you're doing in middle school, but you also add things like a talent portfolio, you do career assessments, inventories, different things like that, so it starts to build on all the way up through high school, so that's the bulk of the, of the career development model, but then in there, oh, can you go back just really quick, that's okay, we also have our EDP process, our EDP process, like I said, it starts in seventh grade, that's our educational development plan, so these are, these are developed for each individual student, they get to meet with their counselors, they get to, to think about what their interests are, it's really just a way to identify career goals and then make an action plan to meet those goals, so they get to learn about themselves, they get to explore different career options and use labor market information, and they learn about what jobs are in demand, for example, they get to select courses, think about what courses might help them get to their goals or the careers that they wanna have, so like I said, that starts in seventh grade, but it's really cool, and as they get older, they can start to incorporate different things that they have, like earning those badges or credentials, certifications that they have, their proficiencies, they are trying to build a portfolio of what makes them marketable, essentially, so that's the EDP, and then the career pathway docs, which I'll talk about that in a minute, those should be familiar to you, and then we go into our three Es, which is enlistment, our enrollment, enlistment, and employment, so we start to talk about which one of those three pathways do we wanna take in our plan, we have kind of a timeline for what that looks like at between your freshman year all the way up to your senior year, we also incorporate our Michigan merit curriculum and graduation requirements, which we talked a lot about last year, and of course, our CTE programs, how do you apply, what are the programs, all of that is outlined in our plan, so it's a pretty comprehensive plan, if you haven't checked it out yet, it's on our website, I encourage you to do that. All right, now the next slide, so these are those career pathway documents, so if you remember, we put together seventeen of these for each of the different career clusters, so these are one-page documents for each of the clusters, so like this one's for agriculture, food, and natural resources, and in these documents, we have things like occupations that you can get in this field by your education level, so you could talk about all the different careers you could get with just a high school diploma or associate's degree, all the way up to if you had a bachelor's or advanced degree, it includes the Bureau of Labor Statistics and Occupational Outlooks for each of these clusters, what you might be able to make, and then of course, the bulk of it is the recommended high school courses that you should be taking if you're interested in this career, it also includes if there's any tech center-related programs, any electives that we may have that would help support this, and also goes into what are some post-secondary options if you're interested in this field, so what programs might Jackson College offer, for example, in this field, and also we go ahead and list some different local employment opportunities, so what locally, what jobs could you get locally, what businesses locally are in this different career cluster, so we have seventeen of those, and those are included on the career corner as well, and then, oh, so we distribute these at parent nights, career fairs, they're part of the scheduling meetings that we have with students, if you've been in the counseling wing, they are huge blown-up posters with each of these documents, which are pretty cool, but, yeah, we're handing these out all the time, kids know what they, where they are, sometimes I'll go and look, and they're all taken, so I'm like, refill those, get some more on the table, because kids are taking them and using them while they're planning for their courses or what clubs they might be interested in. All right, and then the next one is our portrait of a graduate, which we worked on last year as part of our strategic plan, so with our portrait of a Tecumseh graduate, we have really four essential areas that we, as a group, identified that we wanted our students to be well-prepared for have these traits when they leave us after high school, so we have academic proficiency, self-awareness, social awareness, and career-ready, and I know it's hard to see there, but we do have several words that are bolded in this document, and these are skills that we think are teachable, that can be modeled, and things that we wanna be really intentional on making sure we teach our kids about these skills, so, like different competencies, having a growth mindset, having critical thinking skills, being collaborative, those are all skills that we want our students to be able to have when they leave us, so stay tuned with this, more to come, this is in its very early stages, the next part of this really will be talking about how can we incorporate this into our curriculum, what is that gonna look like as young as kindergarten up through senior year, how are we going to intentionally teach about critical thinking, for example, and that was developed with implement, or with input from our parent advisory committee, our student leadership group, and the board curriculum committee, so we had a lot of groups looking at it, giving input, which was great, and then the last one is the conduit to the trades, which was new last spring, if you guys haven't seen this down in the counseling, counseling hallway, it's really cool, the main priority here was to have a one-stop shop for students to be able to access resources, if they are interested in doing an apprenticeship or connecting with one of these trades, they would maybe mention it to a counselor in the past, and the counselor would say, oh, let me send you an email with a contact, or what you can do, this is easier, they can say, yep, go out in the hallway, scan the QR code, and all the information is there for you, it's really going to be a great tool as we start to do some EDPs, and helping students make real-time connections with the different, the various groups that have participated in this, we haven't quite used it yet, because we just got it, it's brand-new, but as we start to do our planning, this will be a big part of that for those students who are interested in the trades, and we might be able to help make connections for them, so that's pretty cool, and I think that's it for now, any questions, that was a lot.
I have a, hopefully a simple question, the career pathways, what's the schedule for updating those occasionally?
So we have to update them every spring based off the course catalog, so the counselors and I, like, they've sent me a few updates to make based on the course catalog for this year, like, for example, we might not offer all AP courses, but some of them we'll leave on there, because we might not offer it this year for them as a freshman, but it-
The career pathways, what's the schedule for updating those occasionally?
So we have to update them every spring based off the course catalog. So the counselors and I, like, they've sent me a few updates to make based on the course catalog for this year. Like, for example, we might not offer all AP courses, but some of them will leave on there because we might not offer it this year for them as a freshman, but it will be back on for a sophomore. So we usually keep the ones that we know are going to be going on at least somewhere between their ninth and 12th grade year, but things do change. But yeah, we make those updates as the counselors say, hey, we're not offering this anymore. But if we know it's going to come back in the rotation, we've left it on because they have four years that they could take that course in.
I have a quick question. As you go through this, do you also provide market information to the students about what careers are going to be more and more available as they get to look out there?
Yep.
So not only are they looking at themselves, but then they're getting an idea of what, where's the most availability and opportunity?
Yes, so we have like the hot jobs and those different documents that the state puts out with like projections and what's popular and where the high needs are and things like that. And that also goes into when we're planning for like CTE courses at the ISD and here at the district, looking at those jobs that are in demand. But yes, they know what that list is. We kind of talk about that. In these documents, we also have like the labor statistics and the outlook of like, is it going to be growing? What's this, is it a 2%? Projected to decline 2%. We're expected to grow between 2021 and 2031. So it kind of helps them think about that. But I think the biggest tool we use is that hot jobs look at, look, outlook.
Thank you.
I love all of this. I have a few questions. With Michigan rolling out their new career development model, you mentioned that they wanted it to kind of be rolled out in all schools. Is there reporting that's required to the state or LASD?
No, like with many things, they tell us to do things, but then never give us any money for that or check in on us with it. But no, there is not.
Do we know how this compares to any of the other districts, maybe within the LASD?
I don't know that any other districts have done this work that we've done, to be honest. I don't, I've not seen anything like this. I'm pretty close with the Adrian Assistant Superintendent. He and I speak quite often and he's like, wow, this is really great. I might have to steal some things from you. So I think we're definitely leading in this work in the county.
Awesome.
Yeah, if I could add a comment, I think not just in the county, but in the state. So Megan, you all were doing the work before
Yeah.
the career plan information came out. Many school districts were waiting to see what the state required.
Yep.
This definitely sets us apart from even some of the larger districts in the Detroit metro area.
Yeah, and I have to give a plug because Deb's here too, but honestly, like, they've been such a big part in helping, because I can say all the things, but they're really the ones implementing it on the ground, right? So like, they're all on board and they're all bought into this and they want to help support students. So I don't think this is just something that's going to sit on a shelf. Like, we're all invested, we're all, like, all hands on deck. This is important to us.
I have two more quick questions. Speaking of implementation, these are some new tools and processes. Is there a way to catch up students, like, maybe that are in high school with stuff that would have done in seventh grade?
Um, you know, I haven't really thought too much about that, but every student, seventh through 12th grade, no matter if they join us as a junior or a senior, they're going to have an EDP. So they're going to have to catch up essentially to get this talent portfolio ready and kind of do the planning that would be geared towards that. So yeah, I mean, I think I mentioned that we have some training coming up for staff where they're going to get to look at these targets, they're going to look at their curriculum, and then they're going to start to embed this into their curriculum. So hopefully, as these things go on, they're going to have exposure and classes in the next couple of years that will maybe catch them up, give them a little more exploration.
Okay, awesome. And the last question is, I absolutely love the conduit to trades, just even the wall itself just looks fabulous. Really well done. But it's in the counselor's hallway, which makes absolute sense.
Yeah.
But it's so awesome that I would really love for, you know, people that come here for sporting events or whatever to be able to see it.
Move it out.
And also even the other students. So maybe if there's a way to share any student successes, stories, either via video or maybe a plaque or something in the main hallway, that would be awesome.
Okay, yep, definitely something to keep in mind as we start rolling it out this year, for sure.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, I'm done rambling.
Thanks, Megan.
Thank you, Megan. All right, Mr. Lewis, I'll turn it back over to you.
Caught me writing one of my rare notes. Okay, item schedule for the next agenda, Mr. Hilton.
Yeah, so certainly trustees will have some good news items, will have some discussion items. There will be a couple of action items that we discussed this evening on for vote in two weeks. And I'm also going to bring a proposal to you, if you will, from the M A S B. I've talked with Debbie Stare and she's given me some documents. I have a couple more questions from her, but I'm going to bring you a proposal around community engagement and our strategic plan and building essentially what would be a new plan. So I'll speak to process as well as timeline, and it'll be your first glance.
All yours. Edith. Okay, board member comments or discussion? No one? I was trying to break the record and get out of here by seven o'clock. I'm going to screw it up.
We had no doubt.
Absolutely. Okay, first of all, Megan, that chunk of grant she just got for, she's a quarter million-dollar woman over there. I mean, not what she gets paid, what she just earned and for the district. And that, that makes such a huge difference when somebody's trying to pinch pennies around here. Mrs. Foley, is this your last board meeting?
I got one more.
One more? Okay, so I'll have tears in my eyes.
We'll make sure it's a long one.
She can get them walked out. Okay, Heather, I liked your idea too, that conduit, that board that's down there, especially at an athletic event. I'm not, I mean, I know we, this is the era of information, but it seems like it doesn't get disseminated very well to parents. That's a great idea where parents could walk in and see that and be, have it be visible. I think that has a lot of merit. Tim Van Ader, when he came up here and spoke, I was the AD for the 13, 14, 14, 15 school year here. I can tell you that the stadium, everything out there, he's got a hand in it. Getting, he somehow figured out how to get ahold of the bleachers from MIS. There was a program they had. They replaced their bleachers every X number of years. So we got those, donated the school for a tax deduction for MIS. And then he built the press box, went through all that frustration with the state that it takes when you, when you build something from them. He, it wasn't just the baseball field. He also led the charge for the softball field. All he did was fundraise for it only. And then he got, made sure parents from those specific groups were there to help because he couldn't do it by himself. He brought his own equipment in. He got a lot of support from FNS Landscape. They can't, they also, a lot of parents put all hands on deck. At the time, I didn't have much of a budget to share for them. I think I gave them $10,000 for, I don't remember what that, just, might have been the soccer field, because that was the last to get done. And so that, I didn't give him $10,000. I mean, as the AD, I was, I could scrape out $10,000 to give him. And then that brings me to my point. He has a good point. You know, we got Josh here that he keeps an eye on HVAC, you know, our air conditioning. We know about what the lifespan is on that. There's a budget for that. To my knowledge, unless you're doing it differently, we don't really budget long-term items for athletics.
So one of the things that I didn't say this evening that I will certainly say more about is that Mr. Madison, Mr. Zajac, and I are, have begun to meet to look at our athletic facility needs and additionally build those in to our capital project needs. So as you know, we do have some, like, for example, the tennis courts, that's actually a part of our sinking fund plan. So it's not that that isn't in place, we're just strengthening that to look at what our needs are now, as well as then project out five years, 10 years, and then prioritize those things so that we can build that into the school's responsibility in care of those facilities. Does that help?
It does.
Okay.
Oh, that's good, because 11 years ago, when I was here, it was my job to make, to keep an eye on the turf. I kept saying, have we got any money set aside for this? Because when you put it in, it's about 12 to 15 years is all the use you're going to get out of it, depending on how many hours go on it. And for us, the turf is seven through 12 football. I think now they have little kids' football. I don't know if it's flag tackle. I don't know what it really is, but below seventh grade football. The two lacrosse fields use it. The two soccer fields use it at certain times of the year. For the boys, it'll be later in the year when the soccer field, the grass gets torn up. Girls, it'll be early in the year because the grass isn't growing yet and they don't want to tear the field up. The bands on it for the home games. PE classes go out there. The spring sports use that facility when it's too muddy. Baseball and softball team will hit fly balls out there and run sprints. The tracks out there, they use the, I mean, you don't want them on the, necessarily on the turf, but they're in the end, in the end zones anyway when they're down there stretching and warming up. It's, it sounds like it's an expensive amount of money when you figure you pay, what do we pay, 600 for the new turf?
I'd have to.
It was about that.
Yeah, you weren't here. I think it was about $600,000. But prior to that, when we just had a grass field, we had to hire two people full-time just to take care of the fields. And that was, and mowing the other grass as well. But the bulk of it over that other building were athletic fields. You got to pay for the herbicide, the fertilizer, the pesticides. You got to pay for the water. You got to pay for a lot of repairs because when you're using a grass field all that time, you never get the grass to grow back in it because you're using it in spring and fall. So it all gets done in the summer. So it was a good deal. I'm glad that there's a program, a system, I guess, for lack of a better term, that we're looking at that now, so we don't just say, well, hell, that's done, walk away from it. And part of the problem with ADs is they're here, John's been here the longest as AD, John Zajac, since maybe Mr. Brzee. I mean, it's usually, it's a three- to five-year tour, so nobody does that long-term planning from that chair, because they're not there that long. So for us to incorporate that into whatever plan you've got, if that's like a budget committee, however you want to do it, doesn't matter, it just needs to be looked at so we don't have these surprises. And then the last thing, we're doing all this stuff, we're trying to budget this, pay for this. State no longer, still doesn't have a budget, 60-plus days after it was due, and now they're talking shutdown. So it, it's beating a dead horse, but it's, it's difficult to do the things we want to do when we can't get legislators to do what they're supposed to do. After, yes?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, okay, I was just saying, if anybody else, anything else?
Yeah, just, just two comments. One, if we're going to do a review of the athletic facilities, then we need to do a review of all of the art classes, including music.
Yep.
So if you see the drum kits, the stands, the chairs, all of that, the sound system in the choir room, the cafeteria sound system, which I think might be on the sinking fund, but all of those things, just as important as sports. The second thing I would say about the state budget is unfortunately, there is precedent for this in Governor Whitmer's first year, where the makeup of the houses was very similar. There, it was literally, I think, 11:52 PM on October 30th or something that we got a budget.